All right, it is eight o'clock, so we will get started. So I'm going to be calling our regular monthly board meeting to order. We will start by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, everyone has a copy of the agenda in front of them. Mr. Linder, do we have any updates or changes to the agenda?
We need to add field trips.
Field trips under new business? So we'll make a 6.9, which will be field trips. For board members, if you check your email, Lisa Voison's presentation just came through there, if you want to follow along with that. And then, Mr. Linder, on 6.4, are we discussing it or just discussing?
Just discussing.
Okay, so 6.4 will be discussed only for the school district calendar. All right, well, we have some visitors with us tonight, so I'm going to be open this time up for public comments. Just a couple of things I'll just ask, is that when you come forward, please come forward to the microphone so we can hear. This also allows for people at home to hear you as well. I would ask that you try to keep your comments to around two to three minutes. We usually allow people to speak twice on the same subject, and we'll just try to keep this entire public comments to around 20 minutes. Just know as a board that this time is usually meant for us listening. We can't always respond to you right now, but we'll do the best we can, okay? Mr. Linder, do you have any incoming texts or anything, or emails from public?
No.
Okay, all right. I'm happy to hear from anyone who's here. It's like, "We are happy." We, we.
Hello, we're Caitlin and Kayla. Kayla and I have made a letter to present to you all regarding the situation of the softball co-op. This matter is the utmost important to us both, which is why we are presenting our thoughts to you today.
It is important to have enough players to fill a JV and a varsity, so that the players can develop their skills in order to have a successful program in the future. For example, when we were both freshmen, Caitlin and I were thrown into varsity positions that we were expected to fill and perform at the same level as the seniors. We were young girls playing against 18-year-old seniors like Kaylee Learman, who threw 60 miles per hour and could hit even harder. Regardless of your skill level, that is intimidating for any underclassmen to have to face. They should have the opportunity to play against individuals who are at the same level of experience as them, in order to develop the skills necessary to be successful as a well-rounded softball player. With the option of having a JV team, players will not have the pressure and stress of trying to perform at the same level as other individuals who have been playing for four years.
After talking to some players and parents, one of their concerns a few had was not having equal representation with a co-head coach. Though we believe it is important to have a representative from Loyal, we just want to play. Even if we did not choose to combine, we still have the same problem, except no coach at all. When it comes to the final co-opping decision, we think this should not be a main concern. From what we have heard of the Greenwood coach, she loves to win and is very competitive. Therefore, we feel she would be a fair and pick the player that would work the hardest and be successful in that position.
We've heard from a couple of parents and players that a concern was whether or not their child would be playing JV or varsity. We believe that any athlete that puts in the time, effort, and hard work can become successful and doesn't need to fear that their spot is in jeopardy. Having this co-op will provide us all with some friendly competition. This will help teach us all that no one's spot is their spot, it is just a spot that they fill for a temporary amount of time, only if they work hard enough. If you're only doing the bare minimum, you will not only be hurting yourself, but the team. Whether you play or not is completely up to you. As seniors, we both realize this also applies to us. We will use this competition to work hard for a position on the team.
We can strongly say to you all that we stand by the idea of this year's co-op and will not only benefit the upcoming season, but create a solid foundation for the future. Thank you for taking time to listen to us, and we hope you all take our words for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, boys. Hello, Mr. Hagan.
Hello. Jeremiah Hagan, that's going to be hard to follow because they did a real good job. But just to reiterate what they said, I have two daughters at the softball program, seventh grade, 10th grade, and year one's going to be tough on a co-op. Year two's going to be better, year three's going to be better. It's just going to transition easier as we get through the years. So as a parent of a seventh-grade daughter, I was really looking forward to her pitching, and it's hard to get pitching through all four years if you're not in a game situation. Hitting, you can simulate that in a cage, it's pretty easy, with four at bats during the game. Pitching, you cannot. JV pitching would be huge for these ninth graders and sophomores to develop. Thanks.
Thank you. Hi, Mrs. Linder. Hi, I'm Wendy Linder, and I am also here to let you guys know that I am in support of the co-op for the softball. I have been helping out on the coaching staff for probably the last 10 years or so, I believe. And when I first started, we had 35 girls in the program here at Loyal, and it's constantly dwindled down now to where we're at, 15. The last five years, we've always talked, "Man, it'd be nice if we could get more girls, get more girls and have JV." And I think this is an opportunity to do that and get those younger girls to stay out. It's hard to keep those girls that come out as freshmen that aren't quite ready to play varsity yet, but all they do is get to practice and sit the bench and freeze their butts off for the whole entire season, and they lose interest. And it'd be nice if they can get them some more game opportunities and things like that to keep them out and grow the program. So I think in the long run, the co-op would definitely benefit, I think, both programs. Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments at this time, on any subject?
Hi, Tara.
Hi. My name's Tara Shale. I'm not quite sure what we're all going to talk about tonight, but one thing I just wanted to kind of bring up before some final decisions are made, I'm kind of talking about graduation, senior year. Hasn't been the best for our seniors this year, so I'm hoping that the last few months that we have left, we can kind of start picking up like our senior year is supposed to be, like maybe having the kids back in the gym together so they can see their fellow classmates that they haven't really seen yet this year, talk about that. Maybe let's get some concerts going again that we haven't had. I know, not that I'm against sports, because I have a very active son that is in sports, but it seems like the only thing that we've had this year so far is sports. We haven't had any concerts, we haven't had any FFA, any NHS, but yeah, we could go door-to-door and sell for NHS and for FFA. So these seniors have waited 13 years for this. Please don't let this last year ruin what the last 13 years have. They've gone for their dedication, hard work. Also, parents, grandparents, and aunts, uncles, and friends have waited for this. So please let them be able to share this experience with them, with their senior year talking like more or less graduation, hoping we don't just put a number on it saying like only this amount can come, or whatever. Some of the seniors are not able to participate in much, like I said, so hopefully that we can start doing more with that. And then, so with that being said, please give the seniors this last few months back and let them get together in the gym, let them eat lunch in the classroom, let them talk with their classmates, let the prom happen, concerts, and most importantly, let graduation happen with no restrictions. Because any of you sitting here tonight, anytime you guys get together with classmates, what is the one thing you always talk about? Your senior year, your high school years, and all the memories. So I'm hoping that we can maybe do the parade again this year. And then another thing we kind of talked about is maybe after, like doing supper by the parents and have all the parents get together and do a potluck like under the pavilion over by the park. And then, showing full honor, also have gotten together and contact like 56 different organizations and businesses to get banners, do a bunch of banners for the main street. So, that's it.
Thank you, Tara.
Hey, Nikki. It's me again. Welcome back.
Hello. Kind of the same concerns. This time, I kind of made a little notes. So first off, I want to say I appreciate, after the meetings, that the board members reach out to contact us. Although, they contact the one person that brings up the question, but they're more than just me asking the same questions, there are multiple parents that have come to the last meetings that also are asking the same questions. So instead of me being like a middleman, it'd be nice if there was some way we could have some discussion, instead of the board members just sitting, listening, and taking notes, and then contacting you the following week with what you had questions about. So again, same thing as normal, just wondering why the kids are being forced to quarantine from school. I believe it was either the September, October meeting in the gym where it was stated that the policy would have to be reviewed month to month. Last month, I brought up the DHS changed the policy in, I didn't write it down on here, but I believe it was December, that their recommendations now are only seven days quarantine with a negative test, or 10 days with no test. But the school policy is still at 14 days. And then, if we can hold a parent informational meeting about trimesters to get it changed to the trimester, when no other schools in our area does trimesters, why hasn't there been a parent meeting held about the quarantine mask policy? I bet you'd come to find that parents that are concerned about the COVID-19 already have their children enrolled in virtual classes. We as parents know it's an assumed risk that by sending our kids to school in person, we accept that risk because we want our kids in school full-time, just as the administration has been striving for the whole since September, to keep our school open and have kids in school, with kids attending in person. And then, I have a note here, when discussing other topics, I've heard board members ask, "What are the statistics? What are the percentages?" So just wondering what these statistics are on quarantining healthy kids from school. How many of those kids showed any symptoms within the 14 days? I bet the percentage is very low, if at all. And then, I've also been talking to other parents throughout the last couple of months about trying to come to school board meetings, to make our presence known, to make our voices heard, and I got the same answer every time. Why? It's a waste of time. It won't make a difference anyway. They don't listen. And I also had one parent bring up the fact that she, I don't think it was one of her students, but there was a student that was supposed to be quarantining that attended a basketball practice at the end of their quarantine, when they still should have been at home following the 14-day quarantine. And I guess, right now, it doesn't affect me directly, but I'm just concerned with these kids that it does affect. I know in a neighboring school, one of my friend's son is a senior, senior year of wrestling. The Thursday before regionals, he got a call about a close contact. Their policy is still at the 14 days. Therefore, he was completely done. Senior year, couldn't wrestle at regionals. The parent contacted the school to see if within that seven days, they could bring in a negative test, and she was denied. So based on the DHS recommendations, with that seven-day no negative test, had that been an effect in that school, her son would have still been able to participate that following Saturday, which would have been day nine, with a negative test at wrestling regionals for his senior year. And he was doing very well. And now, just like that, his season was done because he had a close contact. Within that 14 days, he had no symptoms. And then after 14 days, he was back to school perfectly fine, but he wasn't able to participate when all of his team members were able to keep on. So I guess, again, just wondering when we're going to update the policy and why the policy is still at 14 days. So if we can change our policy and go to trimesters, when nobody else in our area is doing trimesters, why can't we change our quarantine policy? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other further public comments tonight? I will just touch on each subject, just very generalized. I'm going to start Nikki first. Just a couple of things, we actually don't have policies on these things, they're more of our procedures. Just be real careful when we're looking at those things, and as a board member, we try to be careful of that, because policies are kind of set in stone, they're in our policy book, they're things we can't control. So for quarantine and COVID, those are more of our procedures, we follow the guidelines of the county. Yes, we do try to follow up with each parent, each person that comes to our board meetings one-on-one, but in the case of when you came the first time with larger groups of parents, at the next meeting, I did share with the entire board all the documentation shared publicly at the board meeting, and those meetings are all archived on Grayhound TV. We've also discussed why we're still at 14 and not seven and 10 days, and that's also on the Clark County Public Health site as well, per their recommendation. So I would just strongly suggest, you know, that you could look back at those and follow up, you know, as anybody could. So anybody watching our meetings does hear that, we follow up on those things, so it's really open to everybody, but we do try to personally reach out too, because we feel that if you spent that time, we want to make sure we call you. Mr. Linder, what were our numbers last week for quarantine?
Zero.
Zero. So currently, right now, we're not looking at changing our procedure, because we have no one in quarantine. Things are looking good on that end, so right now, we are status quo, but it is a discussion we have routinely and review routinely as well. Tara, I just wanted you to know that all the concerns you brought up are being discussed. Mr. Deekman is working really heavily on most, if not all, of those areas, and I think he does plan to do an update either during his report or at another time tonight. So if you stay, or you could follow up on our minutes, or watch that online too. The softball concerns, I do have quite a bit to share with that, we are going to be addressing it a little bit later in the meeting. If you guys can tough it out and stay, that'd be great, or same as I said, you can follow up and watch this later to kind of see what that discussion was. But I appreciate you, all of you coming. This is how we function as a board, is together. We don't make decisions or discuss a lot of these things independently at this time, because we do need to make these decisions as a group. So that's why you see on the minutes, there's certain things that say approve, certain things that say discuss, or it says discuss and approve. There is rules we have to follow as a board, and some things we just don't have control over and are limited to, so please try to take that into understanding as well. But with that said, again, thank you all very much. We are always listening, but we can't always act in everyone's favor, unfortunately. So next up, we have a presentation from Lisa Voison. She is from Baird, she is amazing. She is going to be talking to us for about 20 minutes on the tax impact for building improvement referendums. You guys may have heard a little bit about how we did the Myron study, we're looking at our facilities. So she's going to give us information on that and kind of run us through that and where we're at and what this will mean for our school. So Lisa, are you there?
I am, can you hear me?
I can, it's your turn.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. Hello, again. Sorry I couldn't be there in person, Baird still has us kind of quarantined, they're really protective of us getting out and going to board meetings, so I've been doing a lot of these types of virtual meetings probably for the last year. So we met at the Wasby Convention, I think, last year, and just kind of talked about some of the highlights, so I'm going to review some of those highlights, and I'm going to talk about what I think is very important for the school board to understand as you go through this journey of a facility project. I've been doing this for 32 years, as pretty much school finance and school referendums. I've also been a board member, so I know how important it is to really just hit the highlights and not try to get down into the weeds, because, you know, there's just some key points, I think, that I'd like you guys to walk away with today, and hopefully you've got the presentation in front of you as well. And so I think what I'll do is I'll go through these slides fairly quickly, and then if there are questions, I'll save them for the end and kind of just talk about, you know, whatever, any kind of follow-up questions that you may have. I always start out with my pyramid slide, because to understand that the way you finance a facility project depends on the project itself. So if you're a small boiler project versus a large new school, the way you pay for that as a school district is going to be different. And so I always say, first things first, let's talk about what your projects are. You guys have gotten through that, you know that your projects are not these small new windows, new boiler, new roof, you've got some larger facility needs. So we're looking more at the bottom section of this pyramid. So there's two ways to finance. You can go to your operations, your annual budget dollars, and those are for the smaller projects, the windows, the carpeting, the floors. You can levy for some projects, which you don't do, some of the larger school districts levy a tax to pay for some of these smaller projects. You could go into your fund balance, your savings account, again, not for the larger. There is a facility savings called Fund 46 that a lot of districts will use as well. So again, when you go to your operational funds, because they're limited by the state, it's challenging to pay for big projects. So districts go to borrowed funds, they go to, not to the bank necessarily, but sometimes, or they'll go issue a municipal bond, which is what Baird does, we help you issue debt. But you borrow money for the larger projects. So you can borrow money and pay for it out of your budget, again, probably likely the smaller projects, maybe $1 or $2 million, or you go to referendum, and that's really what we're talking about. We're talking about possibly going to ask taxpayers to borrow a large sum of money, and then levy a tax separately from your operations. So your total tax levy as a school district last year was about $1.8 million. And normally, this slide has a revenue limit box, which is on the left, which you do, and then there's a number in the referendum debt. So you guys are one of the few school districts in the state of Wisconsin that does not have any referendum debt, it's zero. But if you would go to the community and ask taxpayers to borrow money, this is where that tax levy would come in. So understand, one of the key takeaways is that we're talking about a separate tax levy than your revenue limit. And the revenue limit, those are your operational dollars. So you get about $1.8 million in a tax levy, and then you get state aid, I didn't check to see what that amount is, but those two numbers together total the amount you can operate with. So pay your teachers, pay for your lights, transportation, those kinds of things. You have gone to referendum twice now to increase that dollar amount, so you've asked taxpayers to increase your revenue limit. What we're talking about now is separate, it's a facility referendum, so it's to pay for facility projects. It's super important, because districts tend to, community members tend to not understand that they're two separate tax levies. But more importantly, the $1.8 million, so that doesn't mean anything to me as I'm a taxpayer, if I'm a taxpayer in your school district, I want to know what that is on my tax bill. So the easy way to do that, or to calculate that, is just take that $1.8 million and divide it by all of the property value in this school district. So your property value totals about $212 million. You take the total tax levy, divide it by the property value, and you come up on a per-thousand basis with a mill rate. There's two purposes for mill rate. One, so you can compare to your neighbors what your taxes are, you guys have a pretty low mill rate, under state average, and it's trending, it's been trending down, so great job. And also, so you can calculate what are mine taxes on $100,000 property. The easy way to do that is just move the decimal over two. So your mill rate is $8.74, if you move that decimal over two, you have $874 on $100,000 property. But that's the school tax, and this is estimated, but it gives you a good idea of what a taxpayer in your community would pay as their school tax. Now, you know, there's tech college, county, state, and other taxes on your tax bill, but we're just talking simply for the Loyal school district. So that's why mill rate is important. Again, comparing to your neighbors and your ability to calculate your taxes on your own property. Now, obviously, you double that if your property value was $200,000, or cut it in half if your property value was $50,000. And if I go back to that property value, the total value of the school district, this is important, because when we put a financing plan together, we're going to be looking at your total property value. This is more just an FYI, kind of what the historical value has looked like in your district. So this is good news, you've had an increasing property value, you've stayed right at the state average, maybe a little bit below, but still, an increasing property value is a good sign, and that helps us calculate mill rate. So there's a lot of numbers on this next slide, and this is where I was talking about before, when we talked about you had gone to the community twice in 2014 and 2018 to ask taxpayers to levy more to operate. So in 2014, it was a five-year tax levy that you asked for, and then in 2018, you did another five-year. Both were successful, great job. You're not alone, about 80% of the districts in the state have gone to referendum for this purpose. Which I think, but what I think is the key takeaway here, and you probably know this, but I think this is very impressive, is you have under-levied, so you have not taken that full amount that you asked, because you've probably built your budget for any given year and found, well, we don't need to levy these taxes to the community. So great job for the ability to under-levy, that means you're managing your budget well, and you're also managing your mill rate. So back in 2014, 15, your mill rate was $9.42, $942 on $100,000 property, and now you're down to $8.74, with three years of kind of level, a level mill rate. So I think that's a good sign. Also, I'm going to skip over to the next page, this is your historical, this is kind of just a bar chart of what I just talked about. So the trend here is down, which is good. So your five-year historical mill rate has been kind of declining, and again, it's a function of a few things, but mainly because your property value has gone up. But you've also stayed under state average, which is that purple line, and I think that's something to be proud of. Another graphical version of the mill rate, but broken out into that five-year operating referendum, so looking back, that blue is that first operating referendum, and then the purple is the second. So again, the big question is, you know, are you going to have to go back again in 23, 24? And that might be a message, as we're moving into this facilities project, that we may want to talk about as a possibility, so that your community knows what your plans are. want to talk about as a possibility so that your community knows what your plans are. So comparing to your neighbors, again, relatively low mill rate, you're on the low end, and even more interesting is the next slide, which shows how many of those districts have debt. There's only, there's very, there's few in your area, about half of them have debt and the other half do not. A lot of times I ask school boards to think about the facilities of these districts that do have debt, are they upgraded, are they updated, are they 21st century learning, is it more recent? I know Colby, we just, we went to referendum actually a couple of years ago, and Branton was for a new swimming pool, Spencer's doing their FEMA dome. So I mean, all of these debt mill rates are being used to pay for facilities, and that's what we're talking about for you guys. So you will, when you look at your mill rate here, even though you're on the low end, you know, you'll probably jump up a couple once that debt mill rate gets added on. And I'll talk about what that looks like in maybe even, well, a couple slides later. Another question or takeaway that I think is important for you to know is that the state mandates or legislates what your maximum debt capacity, how much can you have outstanding in debt? And for you, it's 10% of the equalized value, which equals about 21 million dollars, kind of low, but you have a lower equalized valuation, I guess it's relative, but you have a lower value, so you cannot borrow more than, or you cannot have more than 21.8 million dollars outstanding at any given time. So we'll keep an eye on that and just make sure that when it's all said and done, you're not exceeding that limit. So let's talk, just, the next slide just talks a little bit about tax impact, and I just want to preface this by saying, these are conservative numbers, and I think, well, the 208 referendums are done, there's only one time where it'd come in above, so I usually start out very conservative, and I, I'm very careful to say that once we have a more firm estimate of what it is, you know, the total cost of the projects, I will fine-tune my assumptions. So for example, I'm showing, let's just use the 10 million dollars as an example, I am showing that you're borrowing 10 million dollars amortized over 20 years at a 3.75%. Current market interest rates are below 2%, so I've got quite a large cushion on the interest rates. Normally I add one, one and a half, I have more than that just because we're in unprecedented times right now with interest rates, they're so low, and in 32 years, I've never seen them this low, and I just don't know how long they're going to hold. But as we get closer, we can fine-tune the projects and have dollar amount, it's likely I'll bring that assumption down. Valuation growth, we just talked about that, you've been growing 2, 3, 4, even 6%, right now I have 1. So again, that's something that we will fine-tune and adjust and probably be a little bit more aggressive with. What I wanted to do is really just kind of give you the worst-case scenario right now with some very conservative assumptions. Something that I think, another takeaway that we may not want to get into too much detail is that your debt payments will be aided by the state. So the state aids you on your expenses, and a debt payment would be an expense that you would submit as a shared cost to the state. And so that means 41% of the debt payment is being paid for in the form of state aid. So it's local taxpayers are, you know, paying about 60% of the debt payment, not many districts can say that. You are a highly aided school district, and that's mainly due to the lower, you know, the low property value per student. I think it's important, without getting into too much detail, I think it's important to understand that, the factor, the tax impact I have listed here incorporates that state aid. Again, we'll adjust that as the, you know, the fall certified value, certified aid numbers come out in October. So if I were to, I am comfortable in saying this is, this is probably on the high-end worst-case scenario, but, and we will definitely fine-tune these numbers. So again, tax impact, your average mill rate over the 20 years for 10 million is a dollar eighty-five, move that decimal over two, and it's 185 dollars on a hundred thousand dollar home for the year. Divide that by 12, and it's about 15 dollars on a mortgage payment per month. And you can kind of see how we extrapolate that out for different property values and different dollar amounts. And again, this, you'll see an updated version of this, so this is very preliminary. Couple more slides, I think it's important that the board understand this, and you probably know this already, but have this in your back pocket in case you get asked, you know, when is the last time you went to referendum? We just talked about the operating, the last time you went for debt was 2003, and then 1996 before that. Both passed, but I think that's good to know, people may ask, and I think it's, it's important to understand, you know, that you went for debt and all that debt is paid off now, for quite some time actually, so. And sometimes I also include, you know, what are your neighbors doing, so you may get asked, you know, what did, what did our neighbors do? So Owen with the example just passed a referendum for 3.1 million for debt, they're doing an addition. Greenwood passed a referendum last year for non-recurring, NR just means non-recurring operating, same thing that you did for five years. So again, just understanding what your neighbors did in case the questions come up and you have the facts in front of you. The last slide is us talking about future election dates. So 2021 is done, I have a grade out because you can't, you can't go now in 2021, there are no election dates in odd years in the fall. So this is an odd year in 2021, we don't have any fall election dates, but we will have four opportunities to go to referendum in 2022. The primary in February, which we just had yesterday, the general in April, there's also a primary in August, which I don't recommend any school district, I don't even have it highlighted in red because I don't recommend any school district goes to referendum in August, just not good turnout. And then of course your fall, November 8th of '22. So those are your more immediate options, obviously you can move into 2023 if that's the direction the board decides to go, but just know that, you know, in the odd years, there's nothing in the fall. It used to be that you could go to special election where you could just pick your day, and I had districts going in May and on Saturdays and all different kinds, all different times when they were ready, but they took that out of, they legislated that out probably three or four years ago. Also, what I don't have mentioned here, but I think it's a good takeaway, is that as a, as a school district, you can only have two questions on the ballot in a calendar year. Two questions on the ballot for the whole calendar year, and then you're done. So I actually have a couple of districts that I have two questions on the ballot in April this year, while there's no fall, so I guess that doesn't matter. But if you went for April '22 and you put two questions on the ballot, which is an option, then you wouldn't be able to go again if it failed until the following year. Some of the reasons why districts put two questions on the ballot, obviously if they have a facility referendum and an operating, that'd be one reason, or if you have a facility project that includes maybe a performing arts center, or a swimming pool, or a PAC, or athletics, a lot of times they'll split them up into two separate questions, and that's always, you know, always an option and something that we can likely talk about later, but I think it's something that you, is good to know. So that is kind of the general overview. I'll pause to see if there's any questions, or if I covered it all.
You did a very good job, Lisa.
Thanks.
Does anybody have any questions for her? Lisa, I think you, you really gave us all the information, thank you, that all helps a lot.
Good, and I'll be back, you know, as we fine-tune things, but this is kind of more of just the bigger, broader, general overview that I think is important to know.
Definitely.
Okay.
We're good.
Okay, thank you so much, Lisa.
Yes.
You're welcome, I'm a phone call away if something comes up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye guys.
All right, thank you all for staying through that, hopefully you learned something new. She can explain anything financial, it's amazing. So next, we're going to be moving into our consent agenda items. This is going to include approving our agenda, approving our minutes of the January board meeting, approving our recruit and retain committee meeting minutes, and also our financial reports. Take the first two, any questions, concerns about the agenda for this month or last month for many board members? Okay, the recruit and retain committee meeting minutes, any concerns? How about financial reports? Carrie, did you have anything to share, or did anybody have any questions? No, okay, all those in favor of, actually, I would like a motion to approve the consent agenda items, please.
I'm going to approve the consent.
Kim?
One second.
We have lots of seconds, okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, those items are approved. We're going to just do a review on old business here real quickly, this is our long-term strategic planning committee, this is our finance committee. Tom, I think you headed that up.
Yes, I apologize, I didn't have those in your packets, but I'll just summarize some of the things we talked about. We reviewed and discussed the 20 and 21 budget and year-to-date expenses and revenue. One of the items that Mr. Linder shared with us is some of the things through the building and grounds committee as far as some of the different upgrades that we've been able to complete already or that we have planned yet for this, this year and into summer, and a lot of it comes as a result of some of the grants or some of the monies that we, that the school has received as a result of money that we got because of COVID relief that can be used to help with improvements and upgrades in the schools, you know, such as their univents and some of the other things that we need in the school. So we reviewed those. We also, you know, reviewed and discussed the preliminary 21, 22 budget, and one of the things, I guess, that, then we went into the strategic plan, and that's, as, you know, there's a number of committees that we have where we have strategic plan and finances is one of them, and so our priorities, you know, and action steps a lot of times stay the same from, from each time that we've discussed it, but we can add things to them. And so, under the priorities of the financial plan is, one is to ensure effective and efficient operations, and the action steps are evaluate employee benefits on year-to-date basis, continue to explore energy efficiency measures and seek additional funding to maintain quality education programs. So as far as some of the things that we've accomplished in that is, we had evaluated the employee benefits and provided post-employment benefits for all employees, and so we, that was effective. More recently, continue to explore the lighting and energy efficiency, things with univents, doors, and then as far as additional funding, seeking grants, and we have applied for the FEMA grant, which needed to be applied for by the middle of January, and then we also, there was another grant through the, I guess it was the Olson Foundation, that was for vocational programs as well as fitness, fitness type program. So we will, it'll be some time before we know the results of those grants, but we're hopeful that we would be accepted and that would, that we could use those funds for, you know, some, some future plans. The next priority is promoting the positives of the loyal school district. Talked about the action steps developing marketing plan that highlights student success, continuing publishing the district newsletter in the TRG and maintaining social media presence. One of the things we talked about is that they're working on currently is a folder put together to promote our school, continue to use the social media, and, you know, update the webpage as well. The next priority is to ensure the community is well-funded about school funding and financial updates, you know, plan to attend town meetings to provide updates and provide information to parents and the community about school funding. I think things like this where we bring in, you know, someone from our, you know, financial consultant to provide this information is, goes along with that, and getting out in the community and talking to various groups and also providing information to the community. And the last area is exploring alternative funding options that could benefit our school. We talked already about the grants, another item that we have discussed, nothing, you know, that we have decided on, but certainly something that has been inquired about is a staff-only daycare, and how would we pay for it if, or how would we pay if used by those staff members and where we would put it, those are the things that would have to be determined, but, but we just wanted to include that as far as some, an alternative to help, help benefit our, our staff. Also revise the summer school to include the prep days, which they have started that, and, you know, other, other items that could help in funding. So those are kind of just a quick snapshot of what we talked about. And then I guess one of the things, the other, I guess the other thing along with that financial is, if you're all aware, we, we receive state aid based on our enrollment numbers, and, you know, we've been fairly stable, but we have had somewhat of a decline, and sometimes we look at, well, why are we declining, and a lot of times it's due to open enrollment. And so we're trying to find ways that we can re-engage those students who are not attending classes either in-person or virtually through our school, and so we're working presently through, you know, reaching out to provide a virtual material that we would, see if we would be able to work out something to be able to have more of those students be loyal, you know, be assigned to our school, and we could receive the state aid. So that was what we talked about.
Yeah, lots of good stuff. Anyone have any questions for Tom on the finance committee minutes? Okay, thank you, Tom. We're going to move into new business, our first topic is to hire our school nurse slash sub position for the remainder of the school year, and I will give that to Mr. Linder.
I would, I would, we had three applicants for this, interviewed all three, my recommendation is Aaron Shafto for this position.
All right, if I could have a motion to hire Aaron Shafto as our nurse, school nurse sub for the remainder of the school year?
Thank you.
Carrie?
I'll second that.
Harlan, any questions, concerns? All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, welcome, Mrs. Shafto, and thank you. Okay, next is to approve spring coaches. They are attached in your board docs. Mr. Linder, maybe you want to buzz through that quick for us?
Yes. For spring coaches, for baseball, we are looking at head coach Greg Brock, assistant Eric Schoonover, and middle school would be Kenyon Rayquell. Track, we have four paid high school coaches and two that will split half, 50/50. And they are Jim Gettiman, Bernie Stichin, Kyle Demask, Matt Cabista, Paul Zabel, and Rebecca Smith will be junior high.
Okay.
At this time softball, we do not have any, depending on where we're at, so that is posted.
Holding on till we decide on the co-op. Right? Okay, so if I could have a motion to approve the spring sport coach list as listed?
I'll make that motion.
Tom?
I'll second.
Kara, any questions, concerns?
One suggestion I would like to have for approving coaches is that I'd like to see every sport, every season opened up publicly. I think we may have a lot of people in our community, parents who haven't had the opportunity to coach before, and they may not know about these opportunities. I'd like to give everyone a chance to apply. You know, maybe we can come up with some sort of interview process. Then it comes to the board with the recommendation that it's offered. I just think there might be some hidden talent out there. So all those in favor, please say.
I have a question.
Yep, Kim.
So are you talking that would be only for open ones, right? Or are you just saying for every sport?
I'm saying every sport. So let's say you always coach our volleyball team. I think it would be fair to, every year is volleyball season's coming up. Before it starts, well before it starts, we post anyone interested in a coaching position. You know, we're not in contracts with our volunteer coaches while we truly appreciate their dedicated time. I think there may be other people who are unaware that they can coach and that would like to, and they don't know when to inquire. So maybe you're going to be our coach this year, but somebody else applied that now could be an assistant coach as well. Or maybe you've been wanting to step down, but no one has stepped forward. So I'd just like to give everybody an opportunity to potentially fill in any role. Does that make sense? So it's, I guess I have heard concerns in the community that maybe some people don't feel like they're given a shot to coach, or they don't know when to coach, and that maybe we handpick same people. And I just, I don't feel that's true. So I just want to make sure we're very transparent when we have any type of opening or looking for help. Any other questions?
Well, and I would say too, maybe just to make sure people understand that if there's a sport that they're interested in, you know, to ask the coach about help, because lots of, I mean, a lot of the sports have practice squads and everything else. And we probably welcome assistance, and it doesn't come with the every day, maybe, you know, that kind of thing, just to get involved in the program.
Yeah, and we just want to make sure we follow, you know, our school rules with background checks. We know who's working with our kids, stuff like that. So that's why I just want to make sure people know these opportunities are out there. And then maybe that'll help us have a bigger pool of who can help.
So the two softball are posted, and they will be in the paper next week.
Wonderful.
One varsity, one head coach, and then one middle school coach.
Wonderful.
I was just going to point out that, you know, we may want to just review our policy, because I know we do have policy regarding coaching. So, you know, to make sure that we're, you know, we're wording that policy in such a way that we follow that policy.
We're actually due for an athletic meeting next month, so that's a great topic.
That would be a good thing to follow up on and just to review.
Yep, good topic. Anything else? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. We approve those spring sports coaches, and we thank them for their time. Okay, next up, we will be discussing and approving a softball co-op with Greenwood for spring of 2021. I'll let Mr. Linder kind of fill us in on that.
Thank you. Yes. Greenwood approached us a couple weeks ago, inquiring a possibility of co-opping softball for this coming season, the spring season. The WIA will allow a one-year co-op for this spring, and then they would have to renew it after that if things went well. But they applied. Both schools had to write the reasons why and, you know, do. We got it where it would be accepted as a one-year or one season as of right now. And then we'd have to go back and redo it if it goes through and everything works out. So if it's approved and successful, we can apply afterwards. And that's it, I think, I do believe in June, June 1st, that you'd have to reapply. Just a couple things. We talked numbers. Mr. Schiller, Mr. Reath had numbers. We are looking at students at, girls that came to a meeting to sign up. We are seeing that 15 high school students, and we have a breakdown with that. And Greenwood is looking, they had 14 sign up. Junior high would be another area that we would look at, because with both, we have 11, both seventh and eighth, and they have 10, both seventh and eighth. So that would be another area that we would look to co-op with. Couple things. We had a meeting the other, a parent meeting. When was that?
Monday night.
Monday night? Monday night, and had 12 of our parents, of loyal parents of the 15 student or players were here. I thought it was a very good meeting. Voice concerns, concerns of, you know, what do we have for coaches? Will we have coaches, things like that? And JV games. They wanted to make sure that we had JV games. So in talking to Mr. Schiller, what the co-op would look like. It would split practices and games 50/50. Practices would start the week of April 19th at Greenwood, and then the following week, it would be here in Loyal. And then just go back and forth from there. Reasons starting at Greenwood is their field is a better drainage, and they feel that that would be ready to play on it before ours would be. So middle school would start the week of April 5th at Loyal, and then Greenwood the following week, and so on, as long as the fields are ready to go. Each school would host an equal number of games. Transportation, we would bus our students over to them, and they would bus their students over here. So right after practice, it would, or right after school, our girls would change locker room and head on a bus and go to the field. They would change in their locker room and head out to the field, whichever field it is that week. So the concern of COVID came up, COVID issues. They will not be together in a locker room, because that will be done before they will meet at the field. So that should not come into play. It is outside. We just finished up a three-team or school team wrestling that was inside that went over very well. And I do not believe we had too many issues with, I don't think we had any issues team-wise with the team bringing back any illness, COVID or anything, back to their other schools, Loyal and Greenwood. So I think we can take care of that. Uniforms, they both have, the big thing is, especially if they only do it for a year, that they don't spend a whole lot of money on uniforms. They both wear black pants right now. So they were talking about getting something upper that would say Loyal, Greenwood on them, or whatever. So. Coaches, Greenwood will provide two coaches, Loyal will provide at least one, could be two. Playoffs, both teams are currently in Division 5. Based on previous three years, a co-op would put us in, right on the cutoff line for playoffs between Division 3 and 4. This year, we would be projected in Division 4 as of right now. I do believe the cutoff is, yeah, 276, or has been. And we would, our total co-op would be 270. So down the road, the number shrinks. Not our total co-op enrollment, but the number where the cutoff line is. So it could be pushed to Division 3 down the road. Schedule of JV games, several schools have a JV team in the Cloverbelt, Nielsville, McDonald's, Stanley, Boyd, Fall Creek, Altoona. Many expressed interest in scheduling games if we were able to field a JV. Other schools such as Bloomer, Stratford, and Edgar would also be pursued. The ADs do not see scheduling any additional JV games as an issue. As far as athletic codes, that came up. Each school would deal with their students according to their athletic code. I would suggest us being the host school due to us having the majority of these athletes, players. I think, like it was said earlier, that this has been talked about between coaches and parents, but it hasn't gone anywhere. I feel it would be a good thing for the development of a program, not just putting, trying to put together a team for each school. So I think the development of a program where you have freshmen and sophomores playing their respective leagues or skill level, I should say. It was said at the meeting that your freshman and sophomore pitchers, unless really good, don't get that game experience and lose out those, that freshman year. They might do it in a blowout game, and they don't get to have that experience. So the development of catchers and pitchers is key with that. And I think a big thing is just, like I said, try not just to have a team, but building a program that you have kids that build their skills in the younger ages. I think that's beneficial. And at the meeting, the wrestling co-op was brought up and to look at how successful that was. And a little different, but I think it's something that you have a year that you can look at it and try it and see what it can do.
Yeah, I had actually received quite a few comments, both pros and cons, from parents and some students, and I shared them all with Mr. Reath and Mr. Schiller. And then I had a long conversation with Mr. Schiller today, just kind of touching on each point. Really, Mr. Linder hit all of them. Just a couple more things he just reiterated is that, you know, Greenwood's a school that has solid numbers. They have good programs. Again, we're looking to build a bigger program here, not just get by or skip by with low numbers, you know, and try to make it work. Baseball, you know, some people were kind of questioning, why aren't we doing this with baseball? Baseball is a really good program coming this year. But after this year, it's a really good possibility that we could potentially co-op with them as well. And yes, as far as coaches go, I think we approve, we typically approve two coaches from Loyal. So there is, we do have the capability to provide the same amount. In what capacity, head or assistant, not sure. We talked a lot about the fields. You know, sometimes our girls are staying in an inch of water, a foot of water. And instead of going through that, not practicing or being inside, could we just shuttle up to Greenwood and practice on a dry field? Because they use their field year-round. So it gives us a little more flexibility in that regards as well. So I just, otherwise, yeah, Mr. Linder touched on everything. And he said, yeah, the schools are already coming forward, wanting to schedule those JV games. He said, we're going to do everything in our power to do what we can, so. So with that being said, we will get a motion on the table to discuss further. So if I could have a motion to approve the softball co-op with Greenwood for the spring of 2021?
I'll make that motion.
Tom?
I'll second.
Harlan? All right, any further questions or concerns from the board?
What happens in the event if we can't get a coach? Would Greenwood automatically take over? Would they be willing to do all the coaching themselves then? Or what would happen if we don't get a coach?
It's not going to happen.
I'm just curious. I would think we'd work pretty hard to get somebody.
Yeah, I think we would.
Okay.
We would be able, if it didn't.
There's a, what is that word, voluntold? I'm just curious, that's all.
I think we'd work very hard for equal representation.
Yeah.
And the other part of it, I like the idea of doing the junior high as well as the high school. I think if we want to have a successful program going forward for both schools, you need, and if this can work as well as we think it can, that being able to have those younger members being able to kind of go through the same program, like more or less with coaches, I think that's positive. So I'm glad that we're looking at both, you know, the junior high and high school level, you know, for the program.
And I think another part is, is, you know, the 15 players that we have, and it has been where you might have some freshmen that maybe just aren't good enough to play yet at varsity level, and they really sit on the bench. And I know our coaches have done a number of great things of trying to get them as pinch runners and getting them tied, but that isn't the same as having anywhere from six to eight games that they're legitimately playing. And we also talked about it at that meeting where you might have, you might have a sophomore, junior that may play one position and might be partial varsity, but then they also use to catch or to pitch. And maybe they don't get that way in varsity, but they can work their skills and develop that for next year or later years in that JV game.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor of the co-op, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion carries. We have approved the co-op. Thank you all for coming and speaking on that and helping us. All right, next, we are going to discuss our 2021 and 22 school district calendar.
Okay. We are in the process of working on that right now, have been. We've got a few more tweaks to do, so I will be bringing that back in March. So we can table that, and we'll get it done in March.
Let's go ahead and just make a motion to table that, not until next month. Could I have a motion to table the 2021, 22 school district calendar?
I'll make that motion.
Harlan? Carrie? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Mr. Linder, district schedule?
Okay, district schedule, we're meeting with teachers, still in that process. We will be working with, meeting with parents in the very near future also. So that is something that we are working towards, and we will have more information. So that is something that we are working towards and we will have more information for our March meeting.
And meeting with parents about the district schedule too?
What it's going to look like, if we, if we're looking and moving forward with the middle school concept, just kind of what that, what overlay all looked like.
So combining our sixth grade, sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade into a full middle school.
So we're still dealing, we're still working with our, with our teachers and our staff on that. And if that's, if that's the way we go, we will have a parent meeting with them on that.
Okay. Any questions about that? Okay, next is an update on implement weather days.
So we have scheduled two or put on the calendar, two snow days. We have used them up. In talking with our administration, we, we've talked about similar to other schools going virtual on the next, on the next snow day that we have or that gets called off, called off due to snow or cold. I was gunning home for it and now I'm retracting a little bit. So I think we are sitting down and just taking a look at it to make sure that it'll be utilized in a positive way or, you know, comparing that to a face-to-face day that we would have to probably make up down the road. But so we're in discussion with that, we're in discussion with that with our, with our staff members also, our teachers, so.
Mr. Lidner and I talked about this a little bit last Friday and I expressed the concern about, especially on the elementary side, it's a snow day and all of a sudden you need to have your child on, you know, virtual. Now, parent, you know, teachers who have to teach have kids home with them. So we talked about it really being impossible on the elementary side. And I had talked with a few teachers and they had talked about already putting together like a, a pack of materials to send home with the kids now so that if that day comes up, the kids have something they can do, more of like an enrichment activity. But I even said, you know, on the junior, senior high, and I mean, we don't, not everybody's going to remember their laptop, not everybody's going to have a hotspot or Wi-Fi or, it's just tough to call that unless we really know what's coming and we can prepare. So I'm glad you had a little bit of a change of heart. I'm for that.
So we will, we'll continue discussing it and it will go from there.
Sure. I think that preparedness though, I mean, across the board, K through 12, if we have a next day, here's what's expected of you, you know, anything.
So that's what we'll keep talking about. If we decide on something different, we will make sure we inform and send letters and make sure the community knows, parents know.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Lidner on weather days? Okay, then we're going to do a little update here on our COVID data.
Okay. Some questions have been out there. So since we've been in school, we have missed one day due to COVID in the district. We have had junior high and senior high, we've had 12 positive cases. Elementary, we have had seven positive cases, staff, eight. So total of 27 positive cases district wide from September 1st till now. As far as quarantine students, we've had, junior high has had 57 quarantine students, high school has had 109 quarantine students. So this could be repeaters. Elementary has had 152. So our total of 318 from September 1 till now. Last week, I do believe we were at zero both, all of last week and all of this week. So we were, we're two days in this week and we had zero quarantined yesterday, zero today. So.
Can we just get a little?
Yep. Exactly. So we talked about that to our staff and applauded them and they applauded themselves. And yeah, so it's been, it's been very good. But like I said, talking to the community, to parents, we still need to keep our, keep, keep what we're doing. We don't, we don't want to let our guards down now and enjoy being in school and not being quarantined, so.
Yes, it's amazing work to our, our staff, our admin, our custodial services, our parents. I mean, it's been a full team effort to get where we are. Yeah?
I just have a question about the quarantine number. Is that quarantine cases or is it kids? So like if a kid was quarantined three times, are they counted in there three times or are they counted as one?
I think they're counted in there three.
Okay, so that's.
So they took, they just took the number right here. Here's this, here's case number one, case number two, case number three, they just grabbed the kids and, all right.
He said, so repeats.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if they were included or not included.
Real quickly, tentative vaccination for staff, tentatively looking at March 11th at the Greenwood Fire Hall. It'll be a drive-through from 4:30 to 6:00. They kind of set aside times for the Greenwood staff and our staff, so we will have, they will go over at that time. Whoever volunteered to want it, we will sign them up. Friday, the 12th is a star day, so if there's any repercussions, sickness or anything like that from the first dosage, we have that day that they could work from home or, or whatever. Second dose, tentatively looking at April 8th, same spot, same time. That day, we may have to take a look at, April 9th, we do have students. We've gotten feedback from people that have had the second dose shot and they did not feel very well for about 24 hours. So that would definitely, we have approximately about 50 staff members looking to go. So that would put a, an issue with subs and things like that. So we may have to take a look at that. We do have some time. We have, you know, it's April 8th, so I'll be talking to some area schools and also just people that have gotten a vaccine.
Some facilities are, so they stagger, so, you know, half the staff would go this week, half the next week. So then you don't have that big deficit if there's that, you know. So I don't know if we have the opportunity of having more than just the one clinic for the first and second for people who would, who want the vaccine. Something to think about. Any board concerns about anything else Mr. Lidner talked about with COVID?
Just want to talk, dealing with masks, as of right now, we're still on the mandate. If it ever gets overturned or up, we will continue through, through the end of the year, but we will go back to what our, our initial plan was, and that would be if they're seated and they are socially distanced for the most part, they would have them off, they get up to transition to the locker, to something to eat, to go work in a group, to work with someone, to ask the teacher something, then they would have to have it on. And then when they come back, then they could have it off. So that is what we initially prepared for. That's what our summer school started with, with the first week. So that, that's what we talked about back at November, I do believe, and, or December, and I, we stick with that. But I say we can take a look at it every month and just evaluate where we're at. As far as the quarantining, that is a, that is a Clark County procedure right now that all Clark County schools are doing the 14 days. Do I see light in the tunnel? That has come up a number of times in our superintendent's meetings. As of today, I see it 14. I don't know if there'll be wiggle room, we will see. And it's something that we continue to evaluate also. So there's always a lot of talk about it. From Clark County, they just keep coming back and say, hey, you know, we're getting on the top side of this and what we're doing is, is, is working. So maybe for a little bit, or a long, a little bit longer, we do stuff like this. So like I said, every month we, we keep tabs and communicate and talk and make sure everything is going all right. And I understand where, where parents have their, sons or daughters are out and they're perfectly healthy. And I know that is not the best situation, but that is the situation we are in right now. And we'll keep working on, looking at, making it, I don't know if it'll be seven days, but maybe 10 days, something better. So we'll keep evaluating that.
And something just to share that people might not be aware of is that Mr. Lidner works with all the superintendents in our surrounding schools. We really try to mimic each other, we try to stay, you know, whole as a group. So we don't have, you know, one school doing one thing because maybe that would interfere with WIA rules and then they would be excluded from a sport or, so they all try to really remain into the, the same guidelines. So it's, it's a really big undertaking on Mr. Lidner's part to always be, you know, working with other districts and other superintendents and so that we're all on the same page. So we definitely thank him for keeping us up, as up to date as possible. Next, we're going to get a report for our Sage and AGR.
Nancy, if you would.
Yes. So every, we have the ability to have a program for kindergarten, so third grade, where it allows us to reduce the class sizes, so we have either 18 to one or lower. Or we can have two teachers in a room together working, or we can use a person as a specialist who moves around. And so we get funding to be able to do that. Currently, we have, so we do use this in all of our classrooms because all of the, all of those have fewer than 18 students with one teacher. And second grade, we actually are using three teachers to accommodate that. So twice a year, I'm supposed to give you a report on where they're at, look what they're doing. So I'll try to make this pretty quick. We look at reading and math because those are the main areas that are tested and assessed for our kiddos. So for kindergarten, they're looking at by the end of the school year, having 90% of their kindergarten students that are going to be able to verbally count to 100 and 80 in, that's for math. And in reading, they're going to have 80% of their students who will be able to verbally produce all of the consonant sounds by the end of the year. They have to write these goals. For first grade, we're looking at any first grader, they should be, if they came in at a level E and they do a test that tells them what book level they're at, that they should be at an H or higher by the end of the school year. Or if they had come in lower than that, they are going to improve by three grade, three number, or letter grades, letter levels by the end of the year. Say it right. They're also looking at mastering of high frequency words and they want the kiddos in the end of, by the end of first grade to have 165 out of the 220 words. For math, they want, they're using benchmarks with their math expressions textbook series and they'd like 80% of their students to be able to get 80% or higher on the end of the year test. For second grade, they are looking at having their kiddos up to a level M by the end of the second grade year or to be gaining those three levels also. For math, 75% will be able to be at their grade level or higher on the STAR math assessment by the end of the year. And then third grade, 75% of their students will be at the 40th percentile or have, or have increased their, their scores by 74 points. And for STAR math, 75% will be at the 40th percentile or higher or have increased by 92 points by the end of this school year. So I'll come back at the end of the year and give you where they came up.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mrs. Pop. Okay, and then our addition to our agenda will be field trips.
Yes, so we have not done any field trips. We have a, a FFA looking at doing a field trip on a Saturday to Bruce Mount. What I would be looking at is opening up an outdoor field trip. So like if elementary this spring wants to go to a park, a class, one of the classrooms, this would be something that could do. Not going to Vita Plus or Northside or anything like that, but opening it up where they could go for a walk or, or something like that. And senior, possibly a senior class trip would be something also. We can talk about that one down the road, but that one has, has occurred or has come up by the seniors, so. What I guess I'm looking for is, I think we have a bus of about 24 students, I think that are, which is the cap for a bus. I do believe interested in going for an FFA trip coming soon. So I would, I would recommend that we could do that. And then along with that, any outside with a, with anyone. So if a high school class or a physics class wants to go to the park over there to launch rockets, obviously I think they would, but something like that, I guess would be more for the elementary, so.
Below levels, launch rockets.
So.
All right, well, let's get a motion on the table and then we can discuss this a little bit further. Could I have a motion to approve an FFA field trip to Bruce Mount?
I like that motion.
Carrie?
Sorry.
Davy? Okay. Board members, questions, concerns right off the bat?
Do, do we want to amend it to include and allow other groups?
I think we're going to take them as they come.
I would say as they come, like this one did.
Okay, okay, just be more, be just specific, so, okay. So.
So 20, this would be about 24 FFA students, you said?
Jenna, do you know if there's more than that or no?
Well, we haven't like done information out to a lot of them just because we didn't know what it would have been.
Okay, all right.
But, yeah.
So it could be, if you, if you go 20, let's say they had 40 kids, then it would be two buses.
Did you have anything you wanted to share with us before we vote? Are you sure you don't want to come up here? So then what are we looking at or what is Bruce Mount doing as far as, I know they have an indoor area where they eat and mingle, is that?
That's not open.
That's not open, okay.
I think if it is, it's a very limited alone.
The chalet.
Yeah.
It was open when I had went like during Christmas break, but like the seating was like, they had tables separated and everything, so.
And then chaperones, we have?
Um, I'm pretty sure Mrs. Downerbauer would go and then sometimes her husband comes along, but that would all be dependent on her.
So I think in past years, they have had parents, yeah, adults help chaperone.
I'm just wondering about if, if that's going to increase our numbers, would we maybe encourage them to drive separately, just on the bus or anything like that?
Something we'd look at.
Sure. What other questions, concerns do we have?
You know, it's going to be Saturday because that's the only time Bruce Mount is going to be open. I heard, so it's going to come up real quick, but.
Yeah.
Enjoyed the snow a lot last year. The conditions, the conditions, I should say, until they, till we get more snow.
Okay. All right, all right, all those in favor of approving that, approving the FFA field trip to Bruce Mount, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Have a great time.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move into other business now. Chris, do you want to do your report first or do you want to have the principals go first? All right, Mrs. Pop, do you want to start us off?
Sure. This has been interesting this year because there's far less, when you start to look back at your calendar and look at what took place over the month, it's like, whoa, but we've been here, so that's the best part.
Yes.
So today, the regional, the spelling bee, this was kind of different because the kiddos usually go to a competition and they did it virtually today here at school. So they went online and it was kind of a different scenario where they're looking at definitions and, which I think is great as past and future, but they won't know the results of that because all of the different schools have to get in on getting this accomplished. So we won't know probably for maybe a week or two who the actual winners are, if any of our kiddos did make it to that final part. So Riker Littlefield and Jarrett Reeve participated for junior high and Peyton Wolf and Jacob Schmidt were for elementary. And it was nice because we got to take the person who won. And it was nice because we got to take the person who won and the runner-up this year because there were fewer kids that participated. So thank you to those kiddos for doing that and their parents for getting them here for practices and things. Thank you to Mrs. Campbell for helping out, making sure that the kids had a chance to continue with that this year. Last Friday, elementary, we had, what is our, one of our start days? We moved our data day to Friday so that we didn't have to have subs and we could do it all at the same time and it worked out pretty well. What that is, is that we get together and we discuss where staffs were with the whole staff, the regular teachers and the special teachers and the title teachers, and kind of discuss where the students are performing at some of our benchmark levels. And so, and then we get groups that we can get arranged for different interventions from that. And so I'd like to thank all the teachers, because it does take a little more effort to do that. And then a special thanks to the Title I teachers and the special education teachers because they helped to get a lot of assessments done so that that meeting could take place. Also last Friday, we did have, I think it's been kind of cool. Mr. Deekman and I have been, you know, thinking about different things that you can do with the staff because we want them to stay positive and be upbeat as they're working. And so he's been really good. His wife has been really good at participating and coming up with some crazy wonderful things that we can do. Because last week, we did breakout boxes. So if any of you have done escape rooms, which personally is one of my favorite things to do, but you only go with the six people that you really like right now. Close quarters, but it's the same sort of scenario. You have things that you work through to get into the box, so you have all kinds of locks that you have to get in. And then there's, some of them are a little disappointed, but no surprise, it was on the inside. But it was, I thought, kind of, they would probably disagree, but for the two of us, it was quite amusing to watch some people really struggle on some of those. They really worked hard, but it was, it was good. And then those boxes, Mrs. Hiding has those so that the staff can use them for other activities, to use those in the classroom, which is a great thing for them to do. Easter parade, we are gonna do that 50th year Easter parade. And it will be on March 31st. Kindergarten and the first grade teachers are working together to get that organized. So there'll be more information to come very shortly on that, so kind of watch for that one. Thank you to everybody.
I'm so glad you're doing first grade with it. And I was so impressed with Mrs. Hiding last Friday. She works so well with everybody, organize those breakout boxes. And I got to watch it for a little bit and the teachers were on the ground and they were kind of squabbling and they had their cell phones out. They had a lot of fun with it, so a big thank you to Mrs. Hiding for doing that for us.
It's kind of fun to watch the teachers do the students.
Yes. All right, Mr. Deekman.
And if we would have had bolt cutters, they would have been used multiple times. That would have been a hot commodity. Yeah. No, it was a good activity, a lot of good interactions and it's, it's good to see them being used. We have nine of these boxes that can be put together, so she already has teachers signed up for them, that now they're gonna use them in the classroom. So definitely a good asset to have. All right, so obviously we closed out semester one and quarter two here. So just kind of looking over some stuff, which led to us also doing a data review with our seventh and eighth grade teachers last Friday, identifying some students from our screening assessment, our star reading and math that we're looking at, obviously giving them just a little extra help on what they need them, kind of just put them on watch. And just monitor them weekly. And now with Heidi Michaels aboard, we shoved her in full force and getting her a full schedule and keeping her busy. So it's definitely a good asset to have that, so. But it's nice to get the staff together and work through those and how we can help kids, so. ACT prep has started with our juniors. And then also, thanks to Mrs. Waldhardt, who happens to be back there. She is connecting with a gentleman that we're looking at potentially doing an ACT bootcamp type of an experience with our kids, either live or virtual, where they've had a lot of good success with just kind of getting kids tips and, and I don't want to say tricks, but tips on how to work through some of the problems, work through some of the challenges with taking an assessment like that. And there has been a lot of research done behind it that it shows how it benefits the students, in a sense, from not just maybe an increase in test scores, but just that level of comfort and anxiety that is lessened, in a sense, when they're taking the test. So looking through some things like that, as that date is gonna fast approach upon us here, March 9th with that, so as that comes up. We, unfortunately, our winter sports seasons for wrestling, boys and girls basketball have come to an end. But I will just commend all the student athletes on their dedication, their work throughout the season. It's not easy being a student athlete, and it's really not easy being a student athlete during this year when you have to deal with a lot of other restrictions and things that go along with that. So I do commend all the students for a job well done this season so far this winter, so. Last week, we had FCC LA week, so some celebrations along with that. Had a chance to highlight Mrs. O'Dean on a weekly video there, so talk a little bit about her club and organization. This week is FBLA week, so we have some things that, I think tomorrow, there's an event planned with the students. And then a little bit of something on Friday. And I'll have a chance to highlight maybe some of the students Friday because we have students on site in regards to our FBLA program. And then next week is FFA week, which kicks off on the 20th Saturday and then concludes on the 27th. So activities and so forth planned. So again, it's just great to have those things going on. The clubs are meeting, the kids are getting involved with some things and really doing some neat things. So it kind of gives an element of excitement to and some normality, in a sense, to the school day when we can do those things. We had last Friday our first staff wellness committee meeting, so we had, I think, 10 staff members there, so a great turnout. A lot of great ideas just to address, address student and staff mental health, wellness, nutrition, and some activities prep for that. So we'll meet again here in a few weeks and we're gonna try to kick off maybe one of our first activities or first kind of ambitions, I guess, with the staff here, hopefully in March with that. So we'll keep everyone up to date on that too as well. And then also, I was able and very fortunate to have the opportunity to confirm and notify our 2021 valedictorian and salutatorian. We happen to have one of the young ladies here tonight. So I would like to congratulate both Jenna Waldhardt as our 2021 valedictorian and Savannah Schley as our 2021 salutatorian.
Wonderful.
Great work by both of them. Coming up over the next month, then, Mrs. Shear and I have had a chance to meet with all of the students in each of the grades eight through 11 and talk about course request and building schedules and going through different things in the course description book. So some great meetings. Kids really did a nice job of paying attention and asking some great questions. So now they're putting their requests in, so as we're getting those requests in, we're kind of monitoring that, looking through that. And then individually, working with students as we push through this to identify some challenges, conflicts, and work to resolve all those. So we're hoping by the end of the next couple of weeks that we'll have a pretty good handle on where we sit with requests and sections as we look to build then that master schedule with our, with our students and staff then for next year, so. But kids, like I said, are asking some great questions and really planning ahead very nicely. Like I said, FFA week is next week. We have a PLC Coaching Academy for some of us that will be attending Monday and Tuesday. Along with that, we have a small team that's gonna be sitting in and attending a trauma-sensitive schools training that starts on Monday. There's three Mondays that goes through into March. What that means is we would go through this training, it's kind of like Train the Trainer. So those of us that sit in on the training, we will be able to then provide some of that training to our staff. Ultimately, what that means is becoming a trauma-sensitive school and being kind of in that realm. So it's, I've been through some of it before, it's just, it is some really good information and good training that ultimately you can share across the board with students and staff. We will continue with our ACT prep as we work closer towards that day. And then we have parent-teacher conferences coming up February 25th and March 1st, which both Mrs. Pop and I have talked about that. We had some great feedback from the staff and people in regards to doing the phone calls and the conferencing. So we were, we talked about keeping that same format and allowing the teachers to kind of make their schedule for those nights where they're gonna probably making a lot of phone calls. But it definitely allowed us, especially at the high school level, to touch and reach out to more families than traditionally would have probably came in on those evenings. So some very good feedback with that as well. And then lastly, so I've had some students, I've met with some students from the junior class in regards to prom. And I've had a chance to share some thoughts and, and talk more with kind of a network of other administrators around the area within the conference too as well. And, you know, my plan, like I told the students, is, you know, I'm here to support and encourage. I'd like to see an event take place and I think we can plan for an event. I think in the grand scheme of things, it may not be quite what has been done in the past, but I still think it can be something that replicates prom very nicely and very respectfully for our students. And I do think it's important to move in that direction. So what I ask these group of students to do is, because they have all the ideas, is just, hey, go ahead. Gather some information, do some investigating, look at dates, let's look late instead of early, right? So we get more time to plan for it. So let's look at probably late April into May. And I asked them the question, what do you think is the latest possible Saturday? Do you want to do this on a Saturday? That we could possibly host a prom and, you know, and do it to the standard that you want it to be done in? So they came back with some ideas, they checked with a couple of venues, they checked with the Legion Hall. And then just today, we got some feedback from, Rustic Occasions was another one. The students were very concerned that Rustic Occasions was going to be extremely expensive. I challenged them to call because, and explain to them what this is for and that it's for a school. And I think I was rather pleased with what they came back for price to rent that facility. I don't know, never been it, never been there, never seen it, but I've heard great things and it's a wonderful venue. So without seeing it, I would probably steer towards that direction just because of the opportunity to be in a shelter, but in an outside environment where you increase that, you know, ventilation, you increase the flow of traffic and so forth. And I've heard that they just have a really nice setup. And the price was, like I said, very reasonable, I thought, for it. And I know the kids wanted to do it, but that wasn't on their list because they thought it was gonna be too expensive. So with that being said, that is our plan, all right? Not much of one yet, but the plan in the big picture is, yes, we want to do a prom, it'll be sponsored by our junior class. Our intent is to have a high school prom. If we have to look at restricting to the number of participants, we will start with juniors and seniors guaranteed. And then we will add sophomores and freshmen if we have to establish an order in a sense of capacity. That'll be based on a lot about what the venue says, what they feel that they can house in their area. And ultimately, getting feedback from the kids about how many students would be there, I would say we can have a high school prom. The one concern that comes up is outside participants. I will, I'll tell you that talking with the network of people around, there isn't anyone right now that's looking at inviting external people to the prom. If we're gonna have one, it's gonna be, you know, the district, it'll be the school-sponsored prom, it'll be loyal students there. And so they're really, you know, as of right now, that's kind of the main focus there, is to try to keep it so you can have it. And then obviously you can address those things as you go further down the line. But I look at it as, let's do something, all right? Let's make sure we have something for our students, if that means that we have to restrict a little bit. And the students I talked to felt that that wouldn't be much of an issue when it came to it. The bigger issue was, they would rather have all of our high school students be able to come than limit it and look at doing some other restrictions. So more to follow on that as I meet with the group on a regular basis. And I know it's depressing, right? Because I know you got tuxes and dresses and things like that that are involved and prepping for it and alterations and all that. So we will work diligently to get something locked in with a venue and then backward plan from there. So they already have a music DJ in mind too that's very reasonable as well, so. And then next, graduation. So graduation is, has been on the district calendar, set for that Saturday of Memorial Weekend. I think it's the 29th, I want to say, a one o'clock graduation. We would like, from what I heard, I was at the one last year, I've heard many good things about having an outdoor graduation. Now, it's tough because you can't predict the weather, but I think we would like to have something outdoors. We talk maybe in the same spot or maybe moving it out onto the football field where you'd have a grass, more of a grass venue with the students out there kind of being showcased a little bit more. And then looking at how we can kind of beef up the video and videotaping it, the audio and stuff like that. So make it more like a, an outdoor graduation that was meant to be an outdoor graduation instead of just throwing something together. So I think there's some good ideas going around on that, but ultimately, that's the plan. I keep my fingers crossed, I don't think that there should be anything that should stand in the way other than the weather, if it's outdoors. And then we know we just have to have a backup plan for, to move that indoors. So it'd be prepping the indoor facility for, in the event that the weather turns bad and we have to move it indoors. But I am meeting with just one or is there a couple next week, Thursday?
I think the whole class.
The whole, oh, the whole class. You didn't tell me that. All right, so I got set up by a couple seniors. No, we're meeting with the senior class next week. Yeah, next week, Thursday, and just talking about senior trip and just kind of the days ahead, all right? I think in the elementary world, tomorrow is the 100th day of school, right? So the days ahead to prep for graduation and what that looks like for our seniors. So I'm excited. I have been a part of graduation ceremony in some capacity for now 27 years because I hit two of them last year to include this one. So there's a lot of neat things that can be done and so I'm excited to listen to what the seniors have in mind and help them kind of work through this and come up with something that is an event that they won't forget. And that'll be a lasting part of their experience. So do appreciate all the comments tonight too in regards to graduation. So it is kind of in our thoughts constantly. I know sometimes it may not seem like there's things working, but there's probably some things working behind the scenes as we keep moving forward towards it. And I do really appreciate the students coming and stepping up because ultimately, we want them to provide some of that feedback because it is their day. Whether it's prom for the juniors, graduation for the seniors, it's their day, so. Yeah, so lots of things going on.
Thank you, Mr. Deekman. All right, Mr. Lidner, superintendent report.
I think I would just like to thank everyone for comments and showing up and giving us your feedback, all right? So thank you very much. FEMA grant is applied for, so we're just waiting for that. That'll be in June when we find out. We have the process of cameras being installed in the student parking lot, there were cameras there, old system. So this would be an updated system that will flow right into our current system that is in our school building and then just on the outside. So much easier to keep tabs of things out there and if we have any issues, to see. Looking at purchasing a tractor also to replace the '68 Ford we have out there, so. So Dan, Dan is working on that. I have a thank you from Ms. Johnson. I have a thank you from Ms. Johnson, School District of Loyal, Board of Education and Administration. Thank you for the beautiful flowers, I have enjoyed them during this very cold weekend, Ms. Johnson. Myron update, our team set with Myron Construction again, just working on, on the plans for facility upgrade and constantly tweaking them. It's starting to look like a drawing or a sculpture, it's starting to take shape, so. Excited about where we went this last time, so they're just utilizing everything that they took from surveying the staff and, and administration and board and everyone, and, and we're kind of laying it up, so. We'll keep you updated on that. PLC Committee is working on, on our district's vision, updating our district's vision and mission. We will be bringing that to you soon. We've had a couple of room assignments changed. Our suite room, which was right over here, has moved, that is now upstairs in room 94. And we have, we are in the process of creating our Greyhound conference room right over here, which would be accessible to people outside that they can get in. And we just haven't had a conference room where we can meet, whether as a board or we have people that come in, just like Myron, we wanna sit down and meet, and we don't have anywhere. So we've kind of moved that, transferred that into our conference room. I'd like to thank our tech team and our custodians, custodians for all their efforts and help assistance in getting those two rooms done in a matter of a couple of days. Thank you guys very much. Our new Spanish sub for Mrs. Creswell is Katie Highstand, Highstand, doing a very good job. I would like to congratulate our spelling bee competitors, hopefully they did, they well today. Congratulations to all our winter athletes on good seasons. Lastly, I would just like to thank our staff for keeping us open and hopefully keeping our quarantine kids, students down to a very minimum. It's been a, a group effort, staff, parents, community, so parents just keep doing what you're doing, they're sick, keep them home. That helps out immensely, so hopefully we can keep the train rolling, so. Though, so thank you everyone for all your efforts.
Thank you. So we just need to set a couple meetings. Our regular monthly board meeting will fall on March 17th at 7:00 PM. We have a buildings and grounds meeting set at 6:30 that night. In March, our communications committee will present, and that is Kara, Tom, and myself. And then we also have athletics as well, as we go into those spring sports. Tom and Kara, would you guys like to meet at 6:00 on the 17th?
Sure.
Do you wanna do that? Okay. And then do we maybe want to see if we, so athletics is myself, Kara, and Kim. Do we wanna try to maybe coordinate something with our ADs and maybe try to get a date together? Okay, I can initiate an email on that, and I'll loop you guys in, and kind of maybe if you have some topics, board members, maybe shoot them out once I say, I'll send it out to all of you.
We're gonna be to working at, or getting that group to look at it, updated athletic code for that too.
Perfect, perfect, okay. Alright, so we'll kind of look at that, any other meetings?
Building new grounds, you were, we were gonna go.
6:30.
6:30?
So on the 17th, we'll do 6 o'clock communications, 6:30 buildings and grounds, and 7 o'clock closed session, 8 o'clock open. Sound good? Does anybody else have any meetings we need? Okay, so at this time I would open public comments back up if anybody has anything they'd like to come forward with. Mr. Lidner, have you had anyone reach out to you? No? Does anyone else have anything they'd like to come forward on?
I just have a quick question for Mrs. Pop. Are you directly involved in the spelling bee, or is that just the Mrs. Campbell thing?
Mrs. Campbell ran it.
Okay, because the two older boys were not able to participate today, there was a problem with CISA.
Technology stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll contact CISA.
Yeah, well, they, they put the kids' emails as Mrs. Campbell's emails, or her email, so they were not able to access it today to even do the spelling bee. And they, according to what Jarrett told me, is, they, it was connected to her account, so theirs were inaccessible, and they have to do it at a later date. He, as of, um, tonight, he told me they don't know when they're gonna do it because it's a mess and they have to sort out the emails, is what he said.
I will help them sort out the mess.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Alright, alright, anything else, Mr. Lidner? Okay, at this time I would take a motion to adjourn open session and reconvene back into executive session to complete the district administrator evaluation. Harlan? Keri? Alright. Yes, thank you everyone, thank you.